Alright.
Okay, the time is 6:32 and with us this evening is Kim Van Beck, David Assaf, City Attorney, Patrick Knight, myself, Mike Roth, Bill Lovis, Ben Peters, and Michael Gary. And we are expecting Craig Schulte shortly on that, so we'll see. First up this evening, we will move on then to open forum. Is... I think we have a chair. This is kind of funky quarters this evening, but is anyone here for open forum this evening?
I'm just...
Okay.
So, um, and is that gonna pick up okay?
Yeah.
Alright, yeah. So my name is Jansen. And I just wanted to say a couple of words on these things. First of all, I want to thank you, Ms. Campbell, for taking on the project of Public Art today. It's a huge evolution that you've pursued around the range. I really appreciate that. It's been a billion years. And just in the research and so forth, we've been coming up with a very cohesive plan and we're very serious, as the creative economy collaboration to to review that and so far, we're really excited about it. So I just want to say thank you for that and thank you today for reviewing. Mohab, followers requests for public art. And it is going to hope in the future that we'll have many more wonderful applications to review and that we will have some very nice public art in the future to be very proud of all of us. So, thank you for
Thank you. So, anyone else here for open forum? And with that, do we have an update this week?
We talked to John on the phone today. It was terrific.
Everything's terrific.
Well, except that he's not here. That's not terrific. That's great that we missed each other. And now with our days, so we are in the space now. Come stop by anytime, say hello. The doors will be open to the public within a couple of weeks. The liquor store is stocking up. We have all of the liquor stores furniture in place now. The shelving in the cooler is installed. Getting access beer shipment to put in the cooler tomorrow. So we're getting very, very close and I won't steal Chris's thunder. I'll just say pay attention to the weekly updates for when we plan on opening the doors there. That's my city hall liquor store project.
Move on to the consent agenda and with that, we have one additional bill to include and hopefully everyone saw that.
Yeah.
That got sent out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a half payment.
And, and then also remember that design contract for the Stormwater Pond is there too. Would anyone like to make a motion for the amended consent agenda to include that extra bill?
I would make that motion.
Second? Thank you. Any further questions or comments about bills or any of those?
So that's a half payment on... When's our next one? Is it like to close? How long?
As soon as they send it in, boys.
Okay, gotcha.
I would say shortly.
Yeah, okay. Since we already own it.
Yeah, well, we asked them if they wanted to send one now, but their account was
Okay.
Oh, could that be?
It is.
Alright, we'll refresh Craig then where we are at and Craig?
Yep.
Good. Um, we've gone through open forum, got our liquor store project update, and now we're on to the consent agenda. And did, did you see that additional bill that was sent out?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. And then of course, the co-op Stormwater Design Contract and then everything else. So we are just ready to take a vote on that amended consent agenda. Did you have any questions or comments?
Um... No, I just had a question on that shelving bill for the cooler. I mean, did we get bids on that? No. I'm not sure. Okay.
Is that just built into that whole design?
No, it's not the, it's not an amount that we would be required to get bids on. This was more of a, we knew exactly what we wanted.
Yeah, but did the cooler come with shelving? Did we get any trade towards the shelving it came with or anything like that? Just wondering.
It did come with shelving. We sent it back or we're in the process of sending it back. And I'll give you an update on that when I get some more information. We bought, we bought the shelving inside of this cooler from a different vendor.
Alright, I just I was just concerned about like a line item, the freight item. Um, I don't know if we have any negotiating on that, but I was just curious.
On the invoice that was just added?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, there, no, there isn't. It's already installed.
Yeah, well, I know that. I just, um... Was this a change order item? On the LHB project or is this just stuff that we knew we had to buy and, 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 as an extra? Or did it require a change order?
We didn't do it with LHB and McGough. We didn't purchase it through McGough. Like we purchased most of the things in the building. We bought this separately.
Okay. Alright. Okay.
Alright. Craig, agree there for a second. Um, I'm gonna take roll call vote for the consent agenda bill. Ben?
Aye.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Aye. And if that unanimous on the consent agenda, thank you. Okay. Then, moving on to the public art proposal for Bolder Park, page thirty-six of your um, we received a because this goes first in front of the, um, park board because this piece of art is being considered for park property. And it went in front of them multiple times. And so, uh, Dave Tiersting gave us a bit of a summary on, on that. Um, we believe have the artist with us online this evening. Mohab is joining us online. Do you have any questions for him? And, uh, then the descriptions and whatnot are there. Would anyone on the council like to ask any questions of anyone or have some discussion items you would like to start with?
Uh, I guess for myself, I was interested in, I mean, since we're looking at this as something that will not last forever, for all time. Um, I am wondering about it. I, I know it's not written out. It says we will discuss it or negotiate it or whatever. But I am interested in making sure that we, we do that, to make sure that we've got a plan for what do we do when it's done and how and who's taking care of that and just to make sure it gets to where it needs to go in the end. Um, that was one, one thing I would
When you say where it needs to go when it's done?
I mean, like, you know, getting the wood out of there and getting the stone out of there. I mean, I know it's all natural stuff and it's all right there. It appears from what I can read and understand, you know, as a layperson, it seems like, yes, we can take it apart. Get rid of that, but just want to know that there's a plan for that.
Okay. Anything else?
That's my big one.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, when the park board made a decision to utilize Boulder Park, um, we passed that um, with pending some items that we had in that motion. I do not remember all of the items in that motion. Maybe Dave does, if Dave is at the meeting. Otherwise, I do know one item that was in the motion was um, as it appeared uh, visually, the first discussion we had on it. I know one issue I think was um, how it was placed and what it looked like. And as a standing, uh, piece of driftwood. And I think, um, impressionably for me anyway, I thought it would come back as something a little different um, than that. I was anticipating something a little less um, prone to being a possible attractive nuisance children and to um, things like that. Um, and durability and longevity as far as where it's placed next to the beach in rocks and storm action, that kind of thing. Um, as I see how it is projected now, it's somewhat different, not as high in the air, but relatively the same kind of design. So I'm not sure if I can I can't really check that box on one of the things that we had talked about at the first, uh, park board meeting. So I don't know um, what other items. Is, is Dave at the meeting?
Yes, he's here with us.
Yeah, what were the other items on that, in that motion? I can't remember all of them or how many there were. I know that was one of them.
You, oh, you mean in, if the sum-
Oh, yeah.
The summary piece that you have the bullet points on?
Yeah, that's what he's referring to.
Yeah, I have those sitting here. Permissions from other shoreline management agencies.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah. The DNR, the Corps of Engineers, yeah, they signed up, yeah. I didn't know if there was I didn't know if there's any other, sorry, I didn't know if there's any other suggested um, comments uh, that other park board members might have had. That's my question. I don't remember what those all, all were.
It still is.
So it is this bullet point?
Yeah.
So the, the remaining ones then, just for everyone's benefit, I have this highlighted, are safety and liability, duration of the installation, and the gifting process to the city. Okay. Which I had some. Did you have anything else, Craig?
Uh... No, I just wanted to make sure that those were brought up. Um, and if anybody else has any other, uh, comments, I'd like to see what the other city council members maybe thinking.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I have questions about, um, well, I guess first, I, I really am concerned about the height and, and climbing. Like, I just think that that's could be problematic for for kids. Um, I would love to climb that when I was a kid. Uh, and, um, I'm sure I would have fallen, but, uh, moreover-
No, you wouldn't.
Yeah.
I would, you wouldn't. You're skilled. Exactly. Especially below wood. Right.
Um, but moreover, Boulder Park, I don't think we've had any broad, maybe, conversation about what we plan to do with that space at all over the next ten years. Um, we've had some high-level conversations about that use and, um, to, um, provide an impediment to what we need to do as a city. I, I think that's problematic to me. So maybe location and certainly safety is a problem for me.
Yes.
Alright, Bill? Any comments or thoughts? You wanna, or questions?
I think I have the same concerns about that, the occupying that site for a long time with, with no clear action strategy when it's done. And then just become what you call an attractive nuisance. Cause I know I would have climbed on something like that too if it was available.
We're all talking like you're not gonna climb on it now.
Yeah. I think of all the trees around my neighborhood I climbed. I don't think kids do that anymore, but I was busy in a lot of neighbors' yards. But anyways, uh, okay, well, um, I'll take a stab at a few comments. So when people either, you know, call or write notes or whatever, I do read them and we did get, um, written comments from very people and some of those are very close to the project, Greg Mueller's, for instance, and Anne Braddis. And as usual, you know, it's not just when people say, I like this or I don't like this. And none of those were that kind of thing. They're very detailed and very conscientious, well-thought-out comments. And so I, I appreciate that and I read them and some light bulbs went off for me in, in reading those. So I think that's a good thing. And I did appreciate also what we just went through in reading this was your bullet points, because we did need backdrop. You know, it starts with the park board and we need to know. And, um, you know, one piece for me, and you, you know, stated this clearly, but you know, this was a quorum. This was not all five of the park board members, because two of them were not present. So we know that it's enough to be a passing, but, you know, we didn't hear from all five of them, which, you know, that's just how it works, but you know, it's be- because they have had a lot of conversation on that, sometimes you kind of wish you had everyone's full thoughts on something like this. So, um, but like, I, I believe as I'm looking at my highlights to this, um, the things that stand out for me, um, are what, what I've heard from everyone else, which of course is safety. And then duration and of this installation. And then of course, the final gifting process to the city. So I highlighted those same pieces, which seemed to me the three pieces that is why it's really coming to the city that haven't been answered yet, that is on our plate to answer. The, the first two, um, Dave made sure were answered before it came to us. So just kind of starting that way with it. Um, and then I read carefully through the material that was prepared for us. And, you know, things caught my eye, like installed for up to ten years. Um, I noted the potential locations that, that could be for this. And then, um, the other course piece, because I am concerned about the safety piece of it, because I'm not ten years old anymore. And I might care. Um, uh, cause it's all fun when you're a kid, right? Uh, then their, their engineer brought up some of those same, you know, highlighted those same potential risks as well, um, including our invite, our environment, and that's actions on it. And, um, so the other thing I, I had sent out, in case their audience is interested, the criteria that we've created for selection process, I asked that be sent out to the council as well, just so they didn't limit their things to just, oh, I like this or I don't like this, that all the factors that we would want to consider kind of is going through their mind as well. And our criteria talks about artist expertise, um, the design and, and about the actual work, how is this aesthetic work within our community, the financing behind it, safety and sustainability, and then community involvement and sensitivity to this. So I wanted to make sure that the council was having, you know, we were all kind of looking at some of the same factors when we considered this and, and, um, because it's broader, I think, you know, art's subjective and so you want to have some objectivity to what you're doing. So, that, the most I think the thing that summed it up was, um, for me, really helpful was Greg Mueller's comments when he, um, kind of quit my notes in different places. And let's hope I can find this, um, on here. Well, I, I moved him around and I just wanted to read exactly what he said, but, oh, here it is. This work is not intended to decorate Grand Marais, but rather ask viewers to dig, dig deeper into how a poem provides a progressive, alternative, overused, tired, nostalgic art, or it's, it's not oh, that's not Greg's. Anyways, Greg's comment is, it's not the physical here we're talking about. It's not the physical vehicle used to express it. It's about the concepts behind it. And that was the light bulb for me. Um, I feel that the work, we're not here because the log and the rocks are an exceptional piece of artwork. We're here because some, an artist has a vision and he wants to engage people in a larger conversation. And it is a wrong place and it doesn't really require a log and a rock to do that. When I look at all the safety issues and the location, I can't go with this because it feels like we've put up barriers to doing this successfully. And it's one of nineteen. And this is the first one out of the chute. And to me, it's not a completed project if all, well, twenty, I guess, there's still nineteen to go aren't completed. And right now, there's a budget of only fifteen grand. And there's engineering work that needs to be done. And once again, we have a log and some rocks. And I know he wants original or natural elements, but there is just too much risk for me to feel comfortable about this. Cause right now, the engineering is not done. And we don't know if it will hold up and then we need a schedule to be monitoring to see what the degradation is based, you know, storms and elements. And it just seems like a lot of work when the real point is to have conversation around the Great Lakes and the, the area and whatever. And, and I'm even those comments, I'm maybe not even catching exactly what the artist wants to achieve by this exactly, but it's not that. It's, it's not the log. So for me, this isn't a good way to efficiently get across what they want to achieve. And the other piece to Ben's point, and Dave Tiersting has brought this up as well. Yeah, we have some big planning in the near future with all of that land right through up to the Coast Guard. So the chance of that staying in that place isn't real good based on our timelines of other things we need to accomplish in the city and our planning around that. And we also know that Dave, I never used the right word for that, the metal piecing that runs all along, the sheet piling. We know that the gravel underneath it always is running out and then you're backfilling it. So that ends to me another engineering issue about of, about how that's gonna play into place, because we already know that's one of the issues we're trying to deal with now on that area. And we've already had some very high-level conversations with one of the groups that we have some grant funding for to help us with some redesign just on that, even though we know we need a bigger look. It's a much bigger area. So those are the pieces that, um, caught my eye on something, um, about this. So climbing on the project, nat- natural decay and structural failure are hard ones for me, um, based on what we're really dealing with and what its purpose is. Seems like unnecessary risk to get a, a message across, which might be really good one. Any fir- Craig, did you have any further? You wanted to listen to everyone else?
No, I, uh, yeah, the other question, I think, Dave, that's an isn't that the end of the piling there? Isn't that the area that you fill in every year? That spot right there? Or is it further, or is it further, uh, south? I'm not sure.
It's from the rocks on south. There's a probably a two-hundred-foot stretch there. It's not every year, but that entire-
It rolls out, yeah. From, depending on what kind of storms we get.
And by lake levels and waves, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
The rocks themselves, though, the big, big rocks that this is portrayed in is that's nothing we've had to modify or-
Yeah, it's just the, it's just the loose gravel. Okay.
Anything further? Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
Um, I make a motion, um, based on uh, some of the questions that I have that have been answered and not answered, I guess, and some of the things that you alluded to, Tracy, as far as the engineering and the stability of the area, I would make a motion not to approve this.
Okay, would anyone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm gonna take a roll call vote, Ben, Ben? Oh, sorry.
It was tricky.
Yeah. Looking at that.
Yeah. Yeah. Ben, sorry.
Uh, I, yeah.
This is hard when it's a negative. Okay.
So.
Sorry, do I, do I have a chance to make, uh, can I speak to you all? I don't know if you all can even hear me or if I'm in the audience. I'm just kind of confused about where I fit into the process. I don't know if you can hear me. Maybe I should be touching.
No, we can hear you. That's fine.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
You want discussion?
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I just didn't know where I stepped in. Um, great, yes. Uh, yeah, I mean, so much to share with you about the project and I'm, uh, it, it's I guess I want to say, you know, I'd love to know what the process might be. You know, when you bring a proposal to a, a body, you sort of really want to just deliver an idea, something clear. Um, you know, I, I would love to actually show you if I can the the original design and kind of where it shifted to. Um, cause I do feel like it was a significant shift and I even wonder if you all had before you a giant log that was laying on the ground and, you know, ninety percent of it was literally touching the earth, except for the parts that the, you know, roots and the rest of the stump, uh, you know, didn't, um, you know, if, that, I'm wondering kind of where in this process you might be able to, you know, offer suggestions to return. Uh, I feel like I've been trying to be responsive to some of the community feedback, CEC feedback, park board feedback, and I just really have to let you know that most important to me is to actually make a project happen, not to be you know, like myopic about some vision that I've got all by myself. Um, but it just has made sense all along to kind of really stick to something that might be, you know, just have some spectacle to it, have some curiosity to it. Um, really capture, you know, where it kind of sits as far as being a very community-based project, but also a regional project and where it comes from in terms of other, you know, sort of Great Lakes, larger thinking. I just would love to be able to have the opportunity to respond to some of the points that you made and kind of understand what might be possible again, you know, coming back at the end of March, if you're like, we'd love to, you know, see this on the ground. We'd love to, um, you know, have, um, Nick Lamore's engineering plan. Um, the at the moment, it didn't make sense to offer that level of engineering because I really needed to hear from you all. Um, you know, at the time when I went in front of park board too, uh, it just kind of made a lot of sense to get some of that feedback and come back with a little bit more. And each time, I feel like it's been a really kind of responsive back and forth. I was in front of the CEC twice. I was in front of the park board twice. I've just kind of feel taken aback by not having the opportunity to present, but instead to even kind of wedge myself into a near vote. I, I just would love to know, like, is there room to, you know, uh, uh, adapt and, and respond or?
You could certainly make changes. We can only vote on what we've been presented with. So this isn't a time where we're gonna sit and rehash and ask you to make, you know what I mean? This isn't the time that we would say, oh, if you do this, this is this and move back. And I appreciated the bullet points of, and I would appear from our comments, we are all on the same page on that, our concerns with safety, our concerns on location as safety also because that location is just going to be struck very heavily by our local environment. And uncertainties about where this project goes because of fifteen grand won't get you very far when you need engineering in nineteen other places uh, that still have to be fulfilled on. Um, that said, like, one of the things which I didn't comment on, but I made note, made a note to myself, was when you said in your comments, locations, and you listed a variety of things. Well, if you, you, it's, it's up to you to, to go back and think this through, But you could find another location if you want to keep your design concept the way it is. Um, if, if you're, I don't know what the parameters are for you for location, if it's like within the county. But, you know, there's other parks in our county. There's Tofti, there's Luton Townships, maybe Grand Portage or private property, um, or maybe there's a resort on the lake. I mean, I don't know. I'm just throwing out ideas for you. But that's what you list here is that you could see possibilities. So if, if, if you're married to a certain design concept that doesn't fit for what the city would like, then maybe a location's in it. I'm just throwing that.
Thank you. Yeah, no, thank you. I mean, uh, it, it, it sort of seemed equally fraught to just show up and say, I got a log, what should I do with it? It's, you know, really just seemed kind of like you got to deliver something and then you, you revise it and adapt it. And the project is so site-specific that you're totally right, you know, if it ended up um, at a place that had a very different environment, you know, laying in a puddle, you know what I mean? Each space has its own appeal. Um, it just was so important, you know, and I mean, I, this is truly just an opportunity to get to speak to you at this level and, you know, and publicly. Um, it really is so important to have civic support for, for public art. And it is really easy and tempting to, um, you know, work in, in the private sphere and in private space. And the challenges, you know, um, are, are big in trying to move things through this process. And it's, it's been a really big, like, an important learning curve for the project because I definitely, you know, intend to continue um to, you know, to other locations and try to build this. And um, there's a plan for that. But, you know, it does have to start somewhere. Um, and th- this project actually was conceived like, you know, ten years ago, um, during a residency at uh, Graham Ray Art Colony. And um, you know, it's, it's take, it's been such a slow build. Um, and that, you know, that to me just kind of also, for me, that means it's also a slow realization. Like I, the, the rush is really more than anything, um, because I have, uh, you know, the State Arts Board and uh, M RAC funding. Um, which does, by the way, encompass all of the fees required to realize the piece. I just wanted to make that clear that there isn't extra money needed from anybody for engineering or, um, you know, uh, hiring contractors or anything like that. Um, and I've been really lucky to land with, with Jim and Nick and other people. Um, so, you know, I, I'm like very, very happy and very lucky just to get to actually even have fundings and artists to try to work forward with some of these ideas. And um, I hope to continue to do that. And, you know, it would just, yeah, I guess it would mean a lot to think that this plan didn't work for you. Um, I would so love to come back with something that really does respond to some of the things you said. Because I, I do feel, you know, in good faith, but it's um, it's developed like really importantly through feedback from, you know, the other committees that you all have locally. Um, yeah, and you know, I, I just, I, I, I'm not the engineer. Um, and the, a wonderful licensed engineer is, uh, you know, responsible for realizing this planet, if, you know, plan if it ever goes somewhere. And, you know, I, I just feel like it's appropriate for it to be beholden on the professionals to deliver the professional um, pieces of the project. Like, you know, when we, when we're curious about the safety of a building that's being built or a playground, um, you know, there's someone there who is accountable for that. And it would really be foolish for me to try to sort of be able to speak authoritatively about something like, you know, the, the, um, the longevity or durability of, of the object. That's why I have other team members hired, you know, to do that. And um, I will really try again to, you know, come before you with a bit more of that information. I just really, it would really disappoint me to think that you all think I'm trying to, you know, wedge something in here that's just kind of reckless. It's more that I am the, the, the artist and the, the project manager. And I, I do have faith in the people who are working with me and, you know, even the likes of Dave, um, you know, who's, you know, been given so much of his time. It, it takes a lot of people to put something together in, in public space and, you know. Um, I just really appreciate being able to have this opportunity and I'd, I'd love to continue that, you know, with you. So. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. Um, were you speaking up and sharing that with us? I, I, what I heard through this and other people's comments was very little about the, that was a turning point for me, kind of hit me that what Greg said is this is really about your bigger vision and, and this poem you want to create. And nobody's really made any comment about that. And with that, I'm going to say that that means that that's okay, that's a support. Or at least certainly that's not what people talked about. And that's what you're really trying to achieve. So to me, then you, if I were you, I'd start to focus about what makes that happen and solves these safety issues um, and long-term maintenance and location. That's how I would view it. And, you know, because we're, we're so busy talking about a log and a rock that we've lost sight of what you just said, you've said since twenty fifteen, trying to put together. That, that's your really important piece. And I still don't think I could summarize that, even though I read through all the notes. I'm not sure I could in a sentence or two say exactly what that is really well. But um, and maybe that's something that would be helpful later. But I don't think that's the thing people were commenting on. It's some real concrete issues instead, which probably with the thinking caps and creativity around you, you'll figure it out. I don't know. Anyone else want to comment? I'm doing a chat.
Yeah, well, that's true. Um, no, I would like to just chime in and say like, yeah, I would, we'd love, or I, I as a member here would love to see something else come back. I mean, I wouldn't say the conversation's over. I think the comments to what Mayor was saying are not really about the, the heart of the project, more about the outside. You know, those things that we just as a city have to think about that aren't very pretty, but they are important nevertheless. So I would definitely encourage you to come back.
And we have to take a vote on what we have today.
Right.
So that's why, you know, it, it lands that way. And if something substantial goes, then it goes back to the park board again, provided it's proposed to be on park property. That's our, you know, if you make some changes that way too, or find private, whatever, I guess, that, that's for all of you to work on. And I think another piece that we didn't say out loud, but um, when you read a lot of other communities' art policies, one of the reasons they're advocating for art, public art, is they're trying to create that vocal point in their community. They're trying to create that community center, meeting place, um, or place of interest. We have it. It's the lake and it's the harbor and it's the walking out there and it's the beach. And so every time art enters into that, I have to think, why are most people there? They're there for the discovery, like we do with all of our family members and friends and everyone who comes here. It's that sense of discovery, even though it's the hundredth time you've gone to Artist Point, you always feel like you're the one down there exploring something new. And so for us, art, for as much as this community loves art and appreciates art, that's not the main vocal of what we need in our harbor in a, in a back, you know?
It's why we're protective of the harbor as well.
So, but it obviously represents that. Is this helpful? For you, Mohab?
Absolutely it is, you know, yeah, absolutely. And um, it, you know, it's like I say, it's just, it, it makes sense to me to try to proceed, you know, with feedback. And there's, you know, it would just be a total shame if this was, you know, something that an individual was trying to lay on top of, uh, you know, beautiful and wonderful place. I mean, when you're working with nature and art, I, I could just so completely agree with you. You know, so many times you want everything to move out of the way so you can literally just enjoy the vista. You know, sometimes I even wonder about like landscape painting itself, you know, rendering that nature instead of just looking at it, you know? And so, you know, the project is really trying to sort of hold just a little bit of those really beautiful, sublime, natural elements that we all, you know, see on the lake day in and day out and use that as a, you know, a canvas to kind of think about something that's way more ephemeral and conceptual, which is that there are places just like Graham Ray that are so similar uh, and yet so different all around this region, you know? And to try to show up to these places and pull some of those elemental, you know, those components together. Um, it's a lot stronger, I think, a move than say if you were, you know, circling the region and having literal just discussions in the library. Um, the, the, the weight, the, the sort of um, visual impact of seeing the same thing in its um, scale happen five, ten, fifteen, twenty times uh, around the region. You know, you, you just kind of need to try to work with as basic as possible of a, of a vision, but something that can still have a little bit of impact. And, you know, that's why I was, you know, coming um, with a, an idea that felt like it wasn't completely, um, you know, something that you can take for granted, a log that is on the ground, you know, for example. But of course, I take your point about, you know, sculpture being necessarily something people will climb on, you know? Just because it's a piece of art outdoors doesn't mean people are going to leave it alone. You know, that's just kind of true for any public art, you know, that we, we encounter in the world. So it, you have to find that balance. So I appreciate that.
Well, um, anything else? Well, this was a, you know, it was really helpful to read, as I said, everyone's comments because it really helped me focus on what I think is really the most important piece for you and what you're trying to achieve. And I, I, like Michael thinks, um, we'll look forward to see what, what you, what you decide to do. You do have lots of choices, so. I'm not. Thank you very much for attending this evening and everyone else that attended this evening. Appreciate it. And Dave, for your good summary comments as well to help us with that. Well, and with that, we'll move on to ordinance twenty twenty. And sorry, I forgot, you got to, okay, I got to you, right?
Yep.
Craig, we get to Craig? Okay, Craig, sorry. Craig.
Yeah, I support my original motion.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you for that reminder. Michael, where would I be?
I do have a question though, I'll ask. Because I think, I think we should talk about it. There is a piece, no, it's okay. It's, it, I think, I think we need to bring it up. There is a piece of art down in that location already. It's, it's the bronze canoe, correct? And I wasn't, I wasn't around when that was placed, but I'm curious to find out information on why it was placed where it was and why it wasn't um, front and center, right by the harbor. You know, my, what I'm saying? You know, it, it's, it's down in the area that Mohab's thinking about this idea. Um, but it's not like in a walking path. It's not in a heavy traffic zone. It is still in the area, but it is removed from that type of setting. And um, there must have been reasons that somebody had for placing it where they placed it. And um, even though they put it where they put it, it was damaged accidentally by a vehicle. And thus we had to rock off that whole parking area and not let anybody park in there to avoid uh, destruction of something. Um, I don't know, I just was curious about the placement of that bronze plaque and where it was put. Um, I, I think, I think safety might have been part of it and uh, you know.
Craig, I think it was just the artist's suggestion.
Okay. To put it there in that specific location.
And I'm sure they had reasons. I don't know that we recorded any of them in our decision-making process. I think you could go talk to them. I think it's a great example to talk about public art in kind of more general sense and the process of the city accepting a piece of art and the responsibilities that go with owning a piece of art. Uh, it's a great example that if you want to get into sometime.
I just thought I'd bring that up. Thank you.
Could I just, no, no, no. It's precisely the reason we want to create this committee to be thoughtful about these public art pieces that come. So that we can get more buying and so more people know more. It's just like the idea.
Well, that's one thing, you know, like I said, I didn't, I didn't reinvent the wheel on that art policy. It came from a lot of other communities. But that was a, like their community input process was something hadn't even done. I mean, that was a very good one. There's a choice of how we handle it. But I thought, yeah, that gives uh, an appointed time for the larger communities. Not that they're deciding it, but at least they have a time when they know they can add their input and invoice into it. And then, you know, just a nice criteria sheet and the fact that all, there's a lot of unknowns, which for me was, I, you know, and Mohab commented on it, it just right now, so much back and forth. But what we're asking going forward is a lot of those things need to be decided before they're brought in to the city or the park board. You need to know your finance. You need to know how you're going to deal with your liabilities, your maintenance. The full design concept needs to be done. And that should eliminate some of this time thing where you're, you know, you're going back and forth. Anyways, thank you, everyone. It's not like there hasn't been a lot of, um, a lot of long time, hard effort on this. Um, and it sounds like potentially.
Good.
All right. All right. Thanks, Craig. On to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one cannabis rule modifications. David, you are on. Help us. Um. So we've added the temporary cannabis events language. But the other piece that's in here, because we talked about the way Silver Bay handled theirs with the county and then Silver Bay saying zero. So that, that is some changed language in here if you want to talk about it. And um, then the question is that I remember from this, you know, that was our whole question was, is, you know, we were told we couldn't do that, could we do that, whatever? And then I remembered, I think this is right, David, you said if the county lands at zero and someone comes into the city, we have to let them, otherwise we've, you know, so it's not a total.
It's not a prohibition.
Yeah.
It's also doesn't require you to say no if there's another one in the county, just.
Yeah, which allows perfect. If things are going well, great.
So the county gets one first and then we get an application. We have the option.
Yeah, it's our option. Yeah.
Which is. It's likely like the first one would be.
Oh, yeah, right. We know that. But you know, who knows? I mean.
I mean, there have been folks looking at locations outside the city. Yeah, that have been doing work to prepare for this.
Sure.
Could very well happen.
Yeah. Yep, check that box.
Right.
And we'll keep an eye on it.
So that's most of the changes on the first page anyway that David prepared for us.
And then the rest is language that was worked on by the cannabis working group in conjunction with county and business community. Talk about temporary cannabis events. And this is actually mainly based on work that David, you probably did too, but certainly somebody at Flaherty had that uh, for a few other cities in Minnesota. I have to say, it was difficult to talk about this because everyone's minds are filled with questions about what all these things mean. And temporary cannabis event is not something that is particularly well-defined in statute. So everybody's got their own ideas about what it is and, and, you know, is it a stock event somewhere in the middle of the forest? Or is it a small gathering at a local business? Or is it, and there isn't any way to discern so that we have to figure out, oh, what might it be? And all that, of course, is dependent on state finishing their roles anyway. So we landed on a few things that without made sense. Um, event needs a permit or a license from the city. So that means there's going to be some terms and conditions for an event that gets set. Uh, we'll, we'll set a fee for that. Although we haven't said what that's going to be yet. We'll, we'll set a fee for that, although we haven't said what that's going to be yet. The. There's an application that's required and there's a list of information that we want them to provide to us, most of which is statutorily listed. But there's a few things that are special for us. Location and description of sanitary facilities, location and description of waste disposal facilities, if those two things sound familiar. It's because it's the two questions we ask every special event. Organizer. And so that gets to the way we tried to develop this, which is think about, how do we handle special events in general? How do we handle alcohol-related special events already? Let's try to do this as much similar as we can for those things. And then the other additional idea is we want the event organizer to tell us. What additional services their event is going to require. And that's somewhat similar to the way the county does a large special event on. Through the highway department, for instance, like the bike race. Where if you're going to need traffic control, you're going to need emergency services, or you're going to need DVDs or something. You need to tell us that and how to determine it, and then we get to decide. Whether or not we're able to meet that need or whether we need to do something in addition. So it's really scalable that way, if it's a small event, they don't need anything, we look at it, we agree, they clearly don't need anything, we don't have to worry about that issue, but if it's a big event. Where significant local government services might be required. Or it might use them whether they think it will or not, and we've got an ability to continue that conversation.
Can we limit duration of an event, can we define along that event?
Yeah, I think it's four days.
That's the one thing that it is defined as in the statute is up to four days, which is good to know, so that that also matches the alcohol. Temporary alcohol permits, which are one to four day events. So it's limited that way, what we also limited was operating hours. Ten to one, which is again kind of similar to our alcohol rules. And then we've limited in the city locations to our commercial zonal districts, so. You can't do this at the hospital, right, you can't do this in residential neighborhoods. It'd only be in neighborhoods where it's already a commercial area.
Do the, do the setbacks. Remain the same. With the event as it pertains to like a store setbacks from a school or. You know, when you say commercial zone.
Yeah.
Do those.
We don't have any specific language about temporary cannabis events, so David, I wonder if that's something that we would need to add. If we wanted an event to be limited by the same buffer areas that our retail stores are limited by.
Yeah, thank you, I. Yeah, I think language that'd probably be helpful to add, it's a little bit unclear, so the buffers can potentially apply to all cannabis businesses. And a cannabis event organizer is technically a business, presumably that means that would apply to the cannabis event itself. But I think that's something you'd probably want to add to the ordinance. For clarity on that. That wouldn't have been addressed, I think, in your other, or in the rest of the ordinance that would have addressed, so the retail businesses alone.
Right. I mean, that points out another confusing part about temporary cannabis events, they may or may not include sales. They may or may not include use. And so part of the application is they have to tell us whether they're going to include that. If there are sales, we want to know who's doing it, which licensed person is doing it. And if it's used, we want to know where it's happening, we've got some extra requirements about that space. Where it needs to be fenced in, and we want to know what it's located in, and that could be something that I think. As these events happen, we may change over time what our requirements are for that. Certainly has been the case for alcohol, there was a time when we required temporary alcohol events to double fence their serving areas. So there's a buffer zone between the fence where people are being served, and so there's no handing of things over. And and the idea of a buffer zone from a place where people are consuming cannabis, I think that is obvious reasons why they might want to do that. Also might just be completely impossible to. To really prevent all the effects, but a secondhand smoke effect, for instance, we've something we'd look at in terms of the location that they might provide. For use. When the business community gave feedback on this, there there wasn't anybody that was a part of that that was super excited about the idea of. Smoking cannabis in any of these areas. And so it's it's hard for me to imagine how that might apply, like the other thing is. The locations that you might just think of as places that that might make sense. Probably don't because they have an alcohol permit. And there's not an ability to to serve both alcohol and cannabis in the same location. So if it's a bar that's got an alcohol license, they probably don't want to mess with this at all. And that kind of takes the the obvious spots in my mind anyway, in our commercial zones where you might expect an event to occur, they probably won't.
But, but I mean, like that that paddle already does this. And is their license different?
Well, they 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 don't do this because nobody does this, there aren't any event licenses in the state right now, there's no event license holders. There isn't a process to get.
Manufacture alcohol and THC drinks.
And they're having events, other breweries are too that are manufacturing edibles. Now, is that a dip, so my question really was, is that these, because it's the low potency versus cannabis right now? So low potency, there's not an issue with this, because that, you know, they've done two of them.
Yeah, so right now there's not a prohibition, like there are low potency THC. In places that are serving alcohol, those rules are changing.
And I understand is they are going to change, for sure.
Yeah.
And that's not going to be a thing.
It's not going to be a thing.
Pulling all that, separate it all out.
Okay.
I mean, not the low, it sounded like they were going to keep the low potency, at least that's what I.
Well, what we know for sure, they're saying is for places that sell low potency. Things, they can't also sell cannabis, so there's that separation that's going to occur. And so is a bar going to still be able to have low potency beverages and alcoholic drinks? Yeah, it sounds like, but they're not also going to be able to do cannabis.
Yeah, okay.
So their events would be as they are now, which is their low potency and their.
Yeah, I think some places have probably done. What a, a normal person would call an event where you invite people to come and tell them about the theme and things like that. That probably will be covered by this language, but that since this language didn't exist before. You know, come and sit in our backspace and bring your own product and consume. And it's legal to do that, and you know, to bring your own product to a place and consume as long as it meets all the other statutory requirements. And now will we consider that a temporary cannabis event if somebody wants to do that here, I'd say yes, and it would have to follow these rules.
And we do know. Well, that's interesting, because we've had requests from North House with their. Unplugged to be able to, they sort, they get a liquor license, but they've also wanted to be able to serve the. THC beverages too. Now, that would still be, because it's the low potency. And I was just thinking there might be other people one would want to. But that was just one example I knew of.
Yeah, and in that example, you know, they. Were curious about it, right, and and they would, I think, prefer that their event continue. Rather than try to, you know, go one way or the other on that issue, and so whatever rules we want to have, I'm sure they're happy to, they're happy to follow and.
I guess it isn't, because that isn't per se, you know, cannabis, it's an event, but they just want to have those.
Yeah.
You know, so it's an aside, a little different, but still it falls. You can get it then. So now we have enough to create our applications and and create a. Written process so somebody can figure out how to weed through this, or 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 they did it.
Had to happen.
Yep.
Oh, I love it, good.
Yeah.
We. I want to do it, we've been using those. In unfortunate places through this whole conversation, you guys are close, they're unavoidable, absolutely.
Craig, did you have any questions or comments, I want to make sure you're not left out over there.
I had a quite, well, when you have a cannabis event, let's put it this way, an event. Does that have to be somebody that's licensed in our city then, or can somebody with a license from somewhere else come in and fill out an application to have you in a cannabis event in Grand Canyon?
They they don't have to be licensed locally as a retailer to do a temporary cannabis event.
As an event.
Yeah, but the event organizer license is not a local license, it's a state license.
Okay. So then they can go anywhere they want.
Yeah.
And do do that event, okay.
Yeah, and that's kind of one of the thought processes, is this going to be a business that's creative, it would make sense that someone's going to do this for a business. Organize temporary cannabis events and bring a show on the road, just like music events and other events.
Right.
Who knows?
Well, and then at least. They should know what they're doing, if they do it enough times, you know.
Eventually.
There'd be an expertise developed. About how to make sure they're doing it right. I guess that's one positive to that. Anyone else have any questions or comments about the changes to this ordinance?
Mayor Councilman, just to ask for clarification on any amendments to. I guess this ordinance amendment is brought forward, so would you be seeking to add language regarding the buffer zones to section? One fifteen point three two? From the discussion earlier, I just want to clarify is that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
That's the sort of thing that if they wanted to pass a first reading tonight, we could bring back that final language in a second reading, but I'm going to look at. He's shaking his head, I'm taking that as it is.
Okay, good.
Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion for ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero one?
I would make that motion with the.
A second for that?
I'll second.
All right, let's do a roll call for this, any other further comments, anything, Bill? Craig?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Ben?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, and that is unanimous then, and then we'll look for that change and second on that ordinance. And with that, it's a wrap for our main agenda items, and we can move on to council and staff reports. Craig?
Yeah, we have. A park board meeting here, oh, no. Let's see, we went through the golf course rates, we. Changed the rates a little bit, added a little bit increase to. Kind of across the board to. The golf. The golfing prices at the golf course. What else we talked about? We talked more about what's going on within the clubhouse itself. The food that we started doing, tried to try to, going to work on doing more organized events to build. More. Golfing rounds. Uh, let's see. That's pretty much. What we talked about, maybe adding, I don't know. Working on, just kind of brainstormed the golf course a little bit about, you know. Having somebody possibly provide lessons up there, maybe if there's an interest in that. Something to offer the public, the local public anyway, just to purge the. Awareness that we have a golf course and it is in pretty good shape and it was pretty successful last year, even though we had a wet spring. It did do quite well throughout the season and into the fall, as did the the rec park. Oh, we we approved some permits, the art festival for July eleventh through the thirteenth, we approved the wooden board festival. Which is gonna. Follow pretty much last year's wooden board festival. For the North House. So those were the things that we pretty much covered at the park board meeting. I don't have the exact specific amounts and the rate increases, that's on another sheet, but. Typical, you know, rate increases that we do each year. Anyway. That's all I have.
In my memory, was I told that North Point gave a bunch of kids. Golf passes.
Yeah, I think I've read that.
So, you know, maybe that would make sense to to, if something like that happened again or whatever, to find someone who would help with golf lessons.
Yeah, it'd be nice, yeah, that's something that I think would be nice to work work on, you know.
Mm-hmm, trying to build that back up again. Family pa, I don't know, do you have family passes?
Yep.
Okay.
Single couples, family, locals or the city, local people to get a fifteen percent discount. To try to get more local people to to golf. So there's a lot of those discounts for the local people.
Of course, it's awesome. For like, nine o course, city course, as a golfer, it's awesome.
That's all I ever.
I mean, it's so affordable.
Yeah, and and I don't know, when friends or family, you know, everyone loves it, you take them up there, they're like, wow. So, yeah. Anything else, Craig?
No.
Okay, well, I'm excited for some effort to. Okay, Michael?
Yeah, so we have a library board meeting. We have had volunteers been doing gardening out front and we are now going to actually hire somebody because we are running on volunteers. It's going to be a lease of burns with taproots. Doing the gardening, so that'll be great. During this year or the spring. The computers that we have at the library are all kind of coming to the end of their lives, they're five, six years old and. Some of them can't even be updated anymore, so we're going to have to replace them. And we took some bids, we had three that we got, and they're all fairly close. But some new tech here, Jeremy Realbauer was writing, so he's that one, so a local guy, that'd be great to help, so. Yeah, so we decided to go with with him for that. Then they've been, we've been looking to put in an emergency door or adding an emergency door. And we only got one bid for it, and it was pretty steep. So we asked Amanda if she'd go, if she could get a couple more or at least one more, so that we have something to compare to. Yeah, that's, it came off as being a lot of. Quite a bit, and and also we just felt like we don't really know what we're talking about, it just seems expensive, but it'd be nice to have at least one more. So there was that, and the last thing we. Have been building a framework for reviewing. The director, we've been kind of building it and going back and forth and trying to find it. But just finding a good system for doing that, we finally got it handed out and feel like we've got a. Good one ready to roll, and we're gonna start it this fall. And that was my report.
We didn't have any planning zoning, North House on the twentieth. I met with Greg Wright for coffee last week, it was a good conversation, I think he's going to come. Board meeting, April, early April, April ninth, yeah. So did we give an update? The North House and then.
At their annual update?
Annual update, yeah, and then. We get back into gear with them and start sort of having some good conversations again, so. Yeah.
Ozzy, Arrowhead Animal Rescue, I think there's been some. Back and forth conversation.
back and forth conversation about clarifying the unit mainly that's been Mike coming up with, with that. I think we're making some headway. Uh, tree board, we'll have a meeting on the twentieth. And we had one on the twenty sixth of February, and I think there again, you can use the word clarifying, trying to come up with where to focus the efforts and the tree plantings and so forth to, to go for scattering around or to focus in a, a place where you can say, here, here's something would change and, and make an honest with the impact.
It still was. Started my yard.
Yeah.
Don't wait.
Cool. So, yeah, there's, I was reading the note, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff. They, they talked about the, you know, the way out up on the hillside, you know, what do you do with all that dead and dying stuff? When you're trying make headway on that, and you focus on the business district, or where? You focus on tree wells, the highway corridor, how, you know?
Highway corridor. Yes, I am. Highway corridor.
Yeah. Okay. So you continue, so you just.
I think they're, they're still trying to, to pinpoint where to best put the energies and the effort and the money and such thing.
Yes. Cool. Anything else?
No.
Mike?
I've been doing a little back and forth with the best of team. They're submitting plans to the state for review, which is a great sign. So it looks like things are moving forward with that project, which is super exciting. Uh, I've also had a conversation or two with Joel St. John, looking at some potential, um, funding opportunities that the federal government still offers. Wow. And, uh, there'll, there'll likely be more on that in the future. Uh, but also that's a good sign that there's conversations occurring about that project as well. So it's still happening around here. We're down at the offices, as I mentioned, so all of us are down in City Hall right now. Uh, we'll be opening the doors to the public as soon as the liquor store does. Uh, we still have a few details we're working out in the space that we want to be ready for our guests to arrive. And if people want to come take a tour, let us know. Really, that's an invitation to anyone who wants to come take a tour, just give me a call. And we'll show you the space. You're gonna love it. This is a building that is going to serve the public really well for a great, great long time. So and it's really exciting to see all the activity occurring in the liquor store as well. That space is going to be terrific. Our staff's been loved it. Our customers have been loved it. Yeah. We've come to the end of this project and arguably it is, uh, well, it's hard to believe how long we've been talking about it. And it's also hard to believe how quickly we went from old building to building. Just really spectacular job. All the people, yeah, involved. It was impressive.
But was it, when did, what year did this start? Was it twenty fifteen?
Well, I'd say twenty fourteen is probably the best.
Okay.
Stick a tack in the ground, but the conversations were older than that.
Sure.
Yeah. This, this has been, uh, yeah, a long time coming. A lot of people involved in it. Uh, at the mayor's suggestion, which is a terrific one. We're going to invite as many of those people as we can find to the meeting in April. To kind of join us.
I'd like to have them in that room with us when we get to sit in for the first time, all those past council people.
Sure. Yeah.
Awesome. So I think that'd be neat. You know, beyond the open house, like you should be able to sit in this room too. Your turn.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the, the building has a lot of, um, blank walls right now.
Hmm.
And, uh, no hurry, but we'll then talk about what we want to put out in them at some point. And I don't know who we is yet or what that conversation is going to look like, but it's a thought that's occurring to us. One of the many that I'm sure will occur to us is we occupy the space. Uh, last, you, you already mentioned, but I'll be on vacation starting tomorrow. I'll be out of country until, uh, next meeting. So I'll be in, I'll be in the office all that, all day Wednesday, two weeks from now.
Um, I, I don't know if Elena Hansel asked for our support, a letter of support for Soil and Water with our state legislators. I'm not sure if she blind copied, so I'm not sure if it went to all of you. I'm assuming you got it.
Yep.
And I forwarded on, but, um, you know, th- their needs for funding and whatever with the legislature and all their efforts. And so they wanted letters and examples, you know, of, of work they've done. And so I asked, um, with Patrick, our communication director, to help Dave Tiersteg and Shane Steele, and then Mike, you know, all the people who've been involved with all the different projects they've helped us with, either finding the funding or just getting it all organized. You know, like we're having a green roof because they got us the funding. Um, residential stormwater, you know, things in gar- gardens, rain, rainwater gardens. It's Forest Street and First, right, that they helped us with some of that piece on that hillside, right? Wasn't that part of there? Wasn't it? Anyway, so.
There's been so many things that we've done. Oh, yeah, yeah. First half of East. Gotcha. Yeah.
Yeah.
Rain gardens. That's there. There's a handful of, no, this is private. Yeah, there's a handful of rain gardens that that participated in.
Oh, yes. No. Yeah.
Wow.
Always sixty-one work and just, yeah.
So yeah, it's. Will be no problem for us to come up with a really authentic, we love them, letter of support.
Yeah. So that, that was important that we do that. You know, we're not the only ones that need things. And I think it's important to be supportive of each other around all those kinds of pieces too, as a group. Um, we had the cannabis committee meeting and, um, Mike have more to say. I mean, the main product for me is all the work that you did to get the special events piece added to this.
Yeah.
I don't remember any other stuff that was from, or you do.
It's the biggest thing on the job.
And I'm a flunky and miss the nursery management board meeting, but, and there's been a lot of emails back and forth discussing um, what is our real authority and our role, which is always been a question for me. So that should be interesting conversation in the next, the next meeting, which means a trip to two harbors.
You down there, you should invite them to come use our space for their next meeting.
They have been here. We were the first one. Oh, yeah, because we're doing the rotation and we were the first ones that they came to and because they know they want us
Yeah.
rotating through anyways. Um, and I'm happy to report that after the Peters came to comment at our meeting about the Coast Guard Station and the windows potentially out. So I sent our contact, James Hilton, out and I was just about saying, gosh, has he no longer got a job or something? And he later the email comes through, he'd been out either work or personal or whatever, but he was catching up. And he said he would contact Duluth, and then we circled in Pat Elias, and then he's contacting Duluth and between them all, I think at least someone should hopefully be into at least secure, see what's going on. Pushing windows out or whatever it might be. And he also confirmed the, the same steps he said before, that they'll be doing an environmental review in, in summer or fall. And then, um, working on the, the transferring to the quarters office. The message wasn't different. All of those steps, yeah. There you go. That's all I got? Well, Seth, then thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, all the conversation's made works great, by the way.
Thanks.
Like that, just spell check.
When do we get to talk about this? I really want to talk about this. I know we're not talking about this, but when do we talk about it?
Oh, you and I can talk about it anytime.
Okay.